Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly Chairman. Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Present.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Here.
And Chairman Granados.
Here.
Chairman, there are eight Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you very much. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds, and just for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read a statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated, Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union, has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
At this time, may I have a motion to approve the communication?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
And Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all communications.
Thank you very much. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose on commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town or residence for the record. And if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution to which you're referring, and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Sometimes it gets lonely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and Dr. Garrettson. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Reso 853 is a shared service agreement before Union County and New Providence for police, fire, and EMS dispatch services. Costs around $16,000 a year. The public would like to know how these calculations are generated as we see varied numbers from $2,600 for Winfield all the way up to $37,000 for Rawway. Reso 861 is giving USA Architects $34,000 for architectural services for sliding door replacement. To me, this is an absurd cost for architectural services when no actual work is being done. This bloated cost needs to be fully explained to the public. To note, USA Architects donated $6,000 to the Commissioners and their cronies' campaigns in the last four years. Reso 873 is adding $1 million to Murray Pavin's original $1 million contract for a pool gutter system. This doubling of Murray Pavin's contract from $1 million to $2 million is just plain wrong and should go out the bid. This huge cost overrun needs to be explained to the public in detail since change orders get fat markups, and this ends up giving nearly $200,000 in extra profit of taxpayer money to them. If this is true, someone's head should roll for this. 875 is giving Remington Vernick $65,000 for design services for Warren Anco tennis court improvements. $65,000 just for design services for improving five tennis courts and no actual work is included. A tennis court is just fence and so many square feet of asphalt. This exorbitant cost needs to be explained in detail to the public. To note, they have donated over $10,000 to the Commissioner cronies' campaigns the last four years. Reso 881 and 898 is modifying the budget, adding $43 million. I guess that's good. Two of these resos need explanation for the public. 884 for $11 million for Warren Anco upgrades, and 885 for $14 million for capital and operating expenses. This last one really does not make sense unless our county taxes will decrease by $14 million, please. Reso 899 is spending $148,000 for furniture for the county clerk's office. I get the feeling that no one is watching the taxpayers' purse anymore. Presidents, governors, university presidents were caught spending lavishly on furniture, so now it's the county clerk's turn? This needs a detailed explanation to the public. General comments: The indictment of Senator Menendez by the U.S. Attorney reflects such an abuse of power in government. His hiding of nearly $1 million in gold bars and cash is simply astonishing. He certainly led a gold bar lifestyle on the taxpayer dime, and this abuse trickles down through all levels of government. Let's turn to our county, which I have commented on many times. We found the $300,000 Golden Nugget lifestyle of the Mirabellas on the taxpayer dime. I've already talked about Chair Granados and his family. We can call them smaller, but still gold flakes. Former freeholder, now surrogate Hudak, patronage position with no experience, along with his father, a district judge who was set up to replace Judge Malone to apparently get funneled all Democrat machine issues. Certainly can be considered ill-gotten gold flakes.
Patronage position now?
Plenty of other undeserved flakes from this county. Cryin', Oatman, Stender, Tolo, or just a few more of the true gold flakes living in high lifestyle on the taxpayer dime. Political connections and patronage are the conduit to a golden lifestyle on the taxpayer dime, which sadly really takes away jobs from people out in the real world that most likely have a lot more experience to do the job right. To those politically connected, New Jersey government has become a fantastic goldmine. Lastly, what is this about the Annex Building to be closed for months? I walked around it just before. That there was a major flood episode, emergency response, and hazmat teams are called? Were there any county records destroyed in a flood? This does not sound good. The public really should be made aware of exactly what's going on with that Annex Building that's closed. I saw, like, emergency generators out back, hazmat truck. I'd like an explanation for the public, thank you.
Thank you very much. Number 861, Director Polkay.
Reun Chairman, the $34,000 fee is also construction management bidding and all other things that incorporate the installation of this door. So the fee would include putting this door out the bid and then construction management of the installation if need be.
Thank you very much, appreciate it Director. 853, Director Burke.
Thank you Chairman. 853 is contracted with New Providence for $159,000, not $16,000 annually. The analysis was based on a three-year historical dispatching, which New Providence currently has with their card vendor.
Thank you very much, appreciate it Director. 884, County Manager.
Thank you Chairman. It's for a new skating center at Warren Anco. For 885, I just think it was rambling comments, no question. And for the Annex, a pipe broke. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. 889, Clara Fernandez from the Clerk's Office.
The Office of the County Clerk is in the process of renovating the entire office. That includes elections, recordings, and our business office. We have approximately 38 employees. The last time that this was done was several years ago. This includes furniture, these are desks, chairs, everything that goes into an office for several people. And the furniture that we currently have is old, outdated, and it does not meet any of our needs right now. This was, actually, this is another vendor from the previous vendor that we had, and this price actually is lower than the previous price that we had at the headquarters.
And Clara, this is off state contract, correct?
Yes.
And this is through the Clerk's Trust Fund, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is coming out of the Clerk's Trust Fund.
Right, thank you.
That's it, thank you very much. Seeing no announcement, I formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt resolutions 2023-853 through 2023-914.
No move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Commissioner Reports and Comments, and I'll start to my right. Commissioner Dr. Angela Garrettson.
I would just like to make a comment. I know we did a moment of silence on the national affairs that are happening. I think it's utterly important to make sure that folks who are not educated on the entire situation, it's important to make sure that people are mindful of the lives that are being lost, and it is unfortunate for anyone who was impacted at this time. So I do send out my condolences for those who lost their lives to very, just very unconscionable circumstances. I just wanted to make that comment because it is not something that anyone should have to endure or witness or see. The comments really tonight are just talking about some of the fall events, but I think as my comments are more focused on just thinking of the worldly events that are happening at this time. So those are my comments for the evening.
Thank you much, Commissioner Angela Garrettson. Commissioner Joe Bodak.
The Union County Board of County Commissioners invites nonprofit organizations to attend a free professional development workshop titled, "Build Your Audience with Social Media", on Wednesday, October 25th, 2023, from 3:30 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., presented on Zoom by Jessica Marek, founder of Red Root Marketing. Participants will learn ways to use social media to connect with their community to benefit their organizations in multiple ways. The workshop will show how to use a community map and how to create compelling content and ads to meet fundraising goals, increase audiences, and draw participation to events. Organizations eligible for funding from Union County's local arts grant, lab program, history grant, and heart grant are encouraged to participate. Other nonprofit organizations located in New Jersey are also welcome to attend. Organizations who are interested in attending this webinar can register at www.ucnj.org/social-media-webinar/. This workshop is coordinated and hosted by the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs. The event is made possible by funds from the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs, a partner of the New Jersey State Council on the Arts. For more information, contact the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs, a division of the Department of Parks and Recreation, at culturalinfo@ucnj.org, or call them at 908-558-2550. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bodak. Commissioner Leon.
Thank you Chair. Good evening everyone. As Hispanic Heritage Month comes to a close, I want to inform you about joining us on Sunday, October 15th, to the Union County Family Fair Day, which will take place at Warren Anco Park from 2:00 to 7:30 p.m. Please note that this event was to happen on Saturday, but due to impending weather, we used the rain date and we changed it to Sunday the 15th. The event will have free live music, informational tables, food trucks, kids entertainment, arts and craft, and an outdoor screening of Vivo, the movie, starting at 5:30. We had a fantastic month celebrating Hispanic heritage, including a Spanish Harlem Orchestra concert at our Union County CPAC, and a resource fair, leadership panel, and flag raising. And this is a great way to end until next year. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you Chairman, and I would also like to add my condolences to the families of people lost in Israel and Gaza, and my hopes with all of my colleagues for a peaceful resolution. We've had a lot of rain in the last few weeks. It seems like it always happens when we have an outdoor event scheduled, but I would like to just mention that I attended a couple of events that were moved from outdoors to indoors that were very successful. The Bouguet Ballet Company organized the Dance Festival at Liberty Hall, which other years it's been out in the gardens, which is beautiful, but they moved it into the Carriage House and did a wonderful job. And it was a multicultural kind of presentation with, in addition to traditional dances by Isadora Duncan, there was also a troupe of Korean dancers and drummers and everything in between. It was very, very enjoyable. Also, Rosel Park held its India Festival last weekend, and again, something moved indoors, but very, very well, and many people there in beautiful, colorful Indian dress. And I was pleased to represent there. And we also have coming up Four Centuries in a Weekend, Saturday, October 21st to Sunday, October 22nd, 12 to 5, unless noted otherwise. And each day has loads of special exhibits and activities. We have more than 30 house museums and historic sites in the county, and all are open, just for this one weekend, they're all open to the public free of charge. So it's funded in part by a grant from the New Jersey Historical Commission, and part, which is part of the Division of Cultural Affairs in the Department of State, and organized by our Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs at the county. And sponsored, of course, by the Board of Commissioners. So you can see Revolutionary War burial grounds, the county's oldest railroad station, and many other interesting sites. And for the kids especially, they should pick up a Union County passport to stamp. A lot of teachers give extra credit for this, so. And it's something nice for the kids. So, and there'll be tours as well. And to view all the locations and the schedule of events, please go to our website, www.ucnj.org/4c, or if you just go to ucnj.org, you'll be able to find it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Mirabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board is proud to host the Maritime Port Authority Job Fair in conjunction with Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, Union County American Job Center, and Union College of Union County. This job fair will take place on Thursday, October 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the fifth floor of the Calog Building at 40 West Jersey Street, right here in Elizabeth. Throughout the course of this year, our numerous job fairs have achieved notable success. Just this past week, we held our first Union County Cannabis Job Fair, which drew over 200 participants. I'd like to recognize the efforts of our American Job Center and the Workforce Development Board on all their work that they do on a daily basis helping our residents. For more information on future job fairs, please visit ucnj.org/dhs/jobfares. Okay? A couple of other items, Mr. Chairman. One, I was really delighted earlier this evening to be joined by you, Chairman Granados, Vice Chair Palmieri-Mudet, and Commissioner Bodak, who took time to be at the Columbus Day Italian Flag Raising. I always thank, and here she walks right in the door when I'm going to mention her name, Rosa, for the great refreshments and all that she does to help make that event special for those of Italian heritage and all heritage in Union County. The Vice Chair and I, I think, have been on the road a little bit with Columbus events. We were in Westfield just last weekend, and I know that Scotch Plains has an event coming up on Saturday. I was able, Mr. Chairman, to attend the Central Jersey Group of Commissioners. They met, there's a block of Commissioners that are meeting on a regular basis throughout the year. It was in Hunterdon County this time, and hosted by the New Jersey Association of Counties, NJAC, and John Donadio does a great job kind of putting a voice to Central Jersey, and that's our colleagues that surround us. So I'm really happy, I was really proud to represent our county at that meeting, and it was very beneficial. I want to particularly thank the Sheriff for his efforts this coming weekend and what he's done so far, helping protect our houses of worship throughout our county. I mean, his workforce, to be able to aid the local municipal police departments is of tremendous benefit. Sheriff, thank you for doing that, organizing that, and continuing to keep our county safe. I'm proud of that effort and proud of you. One last thing, Mr. Chairman, I want to congratulate you on your recent nuptials, being the newest newlywed in our county. Congratulations, and your wife Kelly, are you getting used to that? Congratulations Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much Commissioner Mirabella. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you Chairman. Just a couple of things. One is the Union County Board of Elections reminds residents that Tuesday, October 17th, that's this upcoming Tuesday, is the deadline for voter registration for the 2023 general election. Election Day, of course, is on Tuesday, November 7th. Those eligible to vote can apply online, by mail, or in person in order to register. The Board of Elections Office is open Monday to Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to accept voter registration forms. On the Tuesday, October 17th, voter registration deadline, the Office, the Board of Elections Office, will remain open until 9:00 p.m. to receive forms. The forms are available in both English and Spanish and can also be downloaded from the Union County Board of Elections website In addition, the Board of Elections is still looking for Union County residents interested in becoming poll workers on Election Day. It's a long day, but poll workers will earn $300 for the day. It starts at 5:15 through approximately 8:15, which is when the polls, the business that happens after the polls close at 8:00 p.m. Any Union County resident who is 16 years or older can apply to become a poll worker. County residents who are 18 years or older must be registered to vote. No experience is needed, but new poll workers must attend a mandatory in-person training session. So to apply online, you can visit the Board of Elections at ucnj.org/pollworker, or to receive a paper application, call the Board of Elections at 908-527-4236, or email pollworker@ucnj.org. And I have to say that earlier this week, I happened to be watching television, and I saw a commercial, one of the commercials put together to encourage poll workers. It was a Spanish-language commercial, so I'm hoping that that is successful in getting us some more poll workers. This weekend, I was happy to attend the Breast Cancer Awareness Event. You know, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month this month. And Hillside had a health fair and a breast cancer shuffle walk. It was a great event. Thank you Sheriff for always being a host of this, along with the mayor and council of the township of Hillside. It really was a wonderful event. It was a little cloudy, maybe a little wee bit rainy, but that did not stop anyone from coming out. And it was personal to me this year because last year, my mom had been diagnosed with breast cancer, and she is now a survivor and doing very, very well. Her last doctor's, her last doctor's report a couple of weeks ago. So she's hale and hearty, some of you have met my mother, so she is that one. So that was extra special for me to be there as the daughter of a survivor. I also was happy, along with my colleague, Vice Chair Palmieri-Mudet, to attend the barn dance that was rescheduled, sponsored by the Office of People with Disabilities and Special Needs. It's an annual event, this time it was held at Warren Anco, but a lot of fun was had by all. There were ponies and bunny rabbits and all kinds of fun stuff, and the kids seemed to have a fantastic time. And then finally, my last comment is, yesterday was National Coming Out Day in this LGBTQ history month, and I was happy to be able to participate once again in the Queer Empowerment Hour. It was really great to have this wonderful series back, so I'm looking forward to our next one, which will actually be in December. So that was great. That is all my comments. I also congratulate you, Chairman, and your lovely bride. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioner Williams. County Council?
Nothing this evening, thank you Chairman.
County Manager Omen?
Thank you Chairman, I just want to echo everybody's sentiments and congratulate you and Kellyanne. It was a great time on Friday night, wishing you a lifetime of happiness.
Thank you very much County Man, appreciate it. Vice Chair, Kimberly Palmieri-Mudet.
Thank you Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners will be holding a special recycling event called Beyond the Bin on Saturday, November 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Union County Locational Technical School in Scotch Plains. We understand that several challenges within the current recycling program still exist, and residents may be unaware of certain items like plastic film newspaper sleeves or old fax machines, broken computers can all be recycled. Others may be unsure of where it can be recycled and may end up throwing them in the trash. Additionally, with New Jersey's highly successful ban of single-use plastic bags well underway, we now have a surplus of reusable cloth bags piling up in homes, cars, garages that residents just don't seem to know what to do with, my house included. I just have way, way too many. So this event will accept those covered electronic devices that I spoke of, plastic film, clothing, clothing textiles, reusable shopping bags, food waste recycling, and Styrofoam. And to learn more about this event and a complete listing of acceptable items, please visit ucnj.org/recycling. And I would also, I had the honor last week to attend a Sukkah lunch at Temple Emmanuel in Westfield. Assemblyman Atkins, Mayor Lizardo from Scotch Plains, along with around 50 or so community leaders, the mayor of Westfield, some councilpeople from Westfield attended. And it was such a wonderful event of community and of acceptance and openness, and it was such a wonderful thing that I was able to attend. It was actually my second year attending it, and I left there feeling so good about our future of people living together and embracing one another's differences. So the events of this past weekend really put a damper on that feeling that I had last week, and my only hope is that, you know, we can all come together as a nation and accept each other. I'd also like to congratulate our Chairman Sergio Granados. I met, not to get sappy, but I met his wife many years ago now at an event. It was a walk in Warren Anco Park, CAU. And my daughter at the time was a newborn baby, and this woman that I met for the first time was just so lovely and so sweet and interested in the baby and helping us along because I think she wanted to be held, didn't want to be put in the stroller and all these kinds of things. And I left there and I told my husband, I said, "Oh, I think Sergio's got a good one there. I like this girl." So I could not be happier for you, and I wish you a lifetime of happiness. And that is all.
Thank you very much Vice Chair, appreciate it. Thank you everybody's well wishes, and also want to announce that the much anticipated return to the return to the Union County Student Training and Enrichment Program, also known as UCSTEP, for the year twenty-twenty-three, also known as the Mirabella Family reunion also, will take place on Friday, December fifteenth, at King University from eight-thirty AM to two PM, offering enriching experience for Union County High School sophomores and juniors. The event will feature informational breakout sessions, including the opportunity to participate in workshops such as You Be the Judge and How to Be an Effective Leader. Building upon this year's theme of stepping up to mental health, the UCSTEP Civic Engagement Challenge will revolve around mental health, encouraging students to brainstorm and create a countywide community service campaign. The project that garners the most votes at UCSTEP and through the online poll will become the countywide initiative taken up by the participating Union County High Schools. To further incentivize participation, the schools that demonstrate the highest level of involvement, enthusiasm, and creativity in executing the project will have the chance to win the one-thousand-dollar Start Now Grant from the Union County Board of County Commissioners. The event's capacity is limited to two-hundred-and-fifty students, and enrollment will be on a first-come, first-served basis. Registration must be submitted by Monday, October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. To submit an application or for more information, please contact Deanna Maseros at nine-zero-eight-six-five-nine-five-thousand-one, or Dee Maseros at UCNJ.org, or visit UCNJ.org/UCSTEP. And with that said, may I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.